And then when we get past minutes, I'll just pass you this, just pass it on to Rob. It's 5:30, January 10th, 2024. Call this meeting to order of the City Council of Haywarden. We will start with the standard agenda items. Approval of the December 13 and the December 21, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes. If you've had a chance to look through those, are there any questions? If not, I would take a motion to approve. Rob, thanks, and a second? Second by Kristi. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, I guess I don't vote. Those opposed, the same. Passes four to zero. One B, approval of the January 10, 2024 Claims for Payment. Council have any questions on those?
No questions.
Okay. Then I would take a vote to approve the claims, I mean, a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Rob makes the motion, and a second? Okay, Derek, further discussion? All those in favor of approving the claims for payment, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, the same. Passes four to zero. We're now at open business from the community. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak? Kathy? You like to speak, don't you? Okay. Okay, we'll get you some other time. Thank you. Mayor's Report. First of all, I'd like to say that it's an honor to sit in this seat following 23 years of Rick Porter serving as mayor. I met with Rick a couple weeks ago, and he showed me some of the things I need to know. I'm excited to serve with these council members, and I know that if we work together, we can accomplish good things for the community. I also look forward to working with the city staff to keep Haywarden moving forward. They do a tremendous job, and they are appreciated. Yesterday was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I'd like to express our appreciation to our Haywarden police officers for their efforts and dedication during this time when we are understaffed. They are working very hard. Kristi, Derek, and I are taking some training courses online provided by the Municipal Leadership Academy. The courses are targeted toward new mayors and city council members. Some of the topics include the city budgets, basics of planning and zoning, human resources, and economic development. Tomorrow evening, I'll be meeting in Orange City and serving on the Sioux County Emergency Management Commission. Remind you to please make sure that your microphone is on when you speak, and speak clearly so you can be heard and understand by those in the room and those watching on TV or on... Uh, council, council comments at this time. Does anyone have any comments they would like to make?
None.
Staff reports, too.
Staff reports. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let's do staff reports. Start with Jacob.
All right. I also want to thank the new members for your, basically, volunteering to help in trying to better the city. Also thank the ones that have been here and finished their time. This week, we had Shady Blankenship start a, um, a college course where she is working with the city, and she's helping out in the front office. And that is going to be good because she's getting some training for the front office and going to be able to help out, and potentially take a part-time job while I'm in Germany, and help give us time for me to train Tracy to do some of the finance aspects. So it's been a great help. Everybody's really appreciated her being here so far. We have been doing end-of-year stuff, so that means W-2s are going out in the mail. We've got 1099s getting ready to prepare, and we have the budget going in full force. In the packet, you guys already have the preliminary, very preliminary numbers. I'm not even going to go over any of the budget today. In fact, it's probably going to change before you see it again for the next meeting because we have not actually gone through, we've just put in wishful numbers for now, and I have to actually go through and start balancing it to make sure that we have the money to do the amounts that we've done and places. And we'll also go over some of that on item five. But that's all I got for right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Jacob? Travis?
Um, I was going to tell you that I was going to leave early tonight and go to a Northwest Iowa area solid waste, their annual meeting, which is the landfill by Sheldon, but that's been postponed till a better evening. So hopefully, it's not two weeks from tonight again. They always have it on council meeting nights for whatever reason, but it's a good one to go to since we're part of that. The future of the landfill is pretty important, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Travis? Carol?
Um, it's been, of course, new time, new year, it gets very, very busy, and as well, welcome. Thank you all for serving. It's great. As you know, my whole job is to make money and bring it in. So any help I get from you guys is greatly appreciated. Um, I did hit submit on the Catalyst Grant for our downtown building. Hopefully, we'll get advanced to the application phase. You have to get through the pre-application phase, so hopefully, we can move forward there, but that is on its way in already. I am working on the USDA revolving loan fund grant. Hopefully, that'll be submitted here in the next couple of weeks. That's the $140,000 grant. I'm working with a couple contractors to get them to sign up for Iowa for our housing projects that we do, which allows low-income or lower-income housing. So if any of our residents have projects they want done, I encourage them to come to my office and apply. We can get you grant money plus low-interest loan money. Working on the USDA reports to justify where all our money went in the revolving loan fund. We have over $800,000 out in revolving loans right now. They do watch that quite closely. We are going to have the grants for the police coming up. It's to help hire, educate, certify. I am throwing out my white flag to grant writers around the country for assistance. That's just above and beyond what I can write or know how to write. It's a whole new grant system. So as soon as I get a guy or gal that will help me with that, we're going to move forward on those police grants. So hopefully, we can get some money in here. They range anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000. So hopefully, that would be nice. The Sulan Grants and the Haywarden Community Grants are all going to start opening up here in the middle of January. So any nonprofit organizations you guys know of that need assistance or have a special project going forward, let them know that. We'll go ahead and help them write any grants we can. Reminder, at the end of the month is our Fireman's Ball. That's on the 27th, so encourage everybody to put that on their calendars to be able to attend. And on the 25th, at 5 o'clock, we have the Chamber Membership Drive. So if you could attend that, that would be awesome as well. But that's what I got going on.
You've been busy, haven't you?
Yes.
Any questions for Carol? Okay, we've got Jenny on the phone. Jenny, do you have anything to report tonight?
I do not, and I apologize for not making the drive. I thought I'd be safe.
Yeah, I think you were wise not making that drive tonight.
I have no update. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're at 2C, Council Comments. Open that up for anybody who wants to make a comment.
I have none.
Seeing nothing, we'll move on to the next agenda item, Mayor Appointments. Rob has agreed to be the Mayor Pro Tim, and I appreciate that, Rob. I have assigned Rob to the Chamber Board Representative. Assigned Kristi to the Chamber Development Committee. Patty and Rob on the Management Committee. And Derek and Rob on the City Hospital Joint Committee. Any questions about that? Okay, number three, Final Pay Request. VanderWint and Sons on the 7th Street Substation Grading. Travis, you want this?
Yes, uh, VanderWint and Sons did the grading impacting of the land that the new substation is going to be sitting on. It was pretty well completed last fall. We were just waiting on some intakes to be put in. They got the wrong ones at first, so we were waiting for the new ones. And we were just waiting for this final pay request until they got the right intake. So that's all been completed. Their project is done. This pay request is for $7,254.60. Total project cost for them was $145,092. $145,090.
Okay.
That was on budget, too, wasn't it, or under budget?
That one was slightly over because we found some concrete footings that we weren't aware of. So that was like $11,000 over. But it's part of the project when you find stuff like that. But this final pay request, it'll close this out.
Close it out? I make a motion to approve the final pay request for VanderWint and Sons.
Thank you, Patty, and a second? Kristi, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the final pay requests for VanderWint and Sons for the 7th Street Substation Grading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes four to zero. Thank you. Item four, First Pay Request for IES Commercial Incorporated, 7th Street Substation Construction. Travis, again?
Um, IES is the general contractor for the substation construction, and they had their sub in there and did all the concrete foundations this fall. So we were lucky to get all those poured by the middle of December, or early December. So that's all ready to go for spring when the steel comes and the other material comes, they can start on the project. So that pay request is for $368,502.19, and that is right on budget with what was bid.
Any questions for Travis? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the first, the pay request for IES Commercial, Inc.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second that.
Rob? Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the First Pay Request for IES Commercial Incorporated for the 7th Street Substation Construction, please say aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Passes four to zero. Thank you. We're at number five, Budget Start Payroll Rates. Jacob?
All right, so in everybody's packet, like I said, you all have the budget sheets. Take those with a grain of salt. Those numbers are not even close to being concrete. They're going to change before you have them next council packet. I just want you guys to get a first look, especially for our new council members, to be able to kind of move through it and see where stuff is and just kind of see how it goes. I don't have, uh, you guys can come in sometime, and I can show you if you guys have questions on that. For the payroll, this is going to be a necessary process for our budgeting because this is usually a large portion of all the expenses that we have in each account, and it is good to know how much we need to budget for as we're going along through this process. We have the union contract that is stated out at 2.5%. I believe it's got two years left?
Yes.
And, um, this was a five-year contract when they, they did it. I will say that, um, historically, we have done the same percentage throughout the whole city as the union contract. I would like to encourage you guys to potentially do more than the 2.5% as the costs are, um, the cost increase of everything are more than 2.5%. So essentially, it'd be a pay decrease if they stay at the 2.5%. So they'll be making less next year, even though they're making more. Uh, I am going to go over this sheet and just kind of tell you guys how to read it. I have every person and their current salary is marked in that far-left column. And then we have three columns there, one at 2.5, one at 3.5, and one at 5. It doesn't have to be any of those numbers. If you guys want to do some other number or get those numbers, I can get those for you as well. And it kind of breaks it out to how much it would be at those percentages and then totals per department, so you could see how much that would cost for that department. So you can see right now, the total current police salary is at $279,000. It'd be 286 at 2.5, or 289 at 3.5, and 293 at 5%. I will say that our current salary was higher because of the structure that we had with five officers. This is a structure with just four officers. So even at the 5%, it's less than our current amount, so... Same thing with you, well, not the same exact thing, but you can see all the way down just how much the difference of cost is. So for ambulance, the difference between 2.5 and 5% is just under $2,000. And then the street total, and the library total. Now technically, the library will give me their own rates, so I just put this in here because oftentimes, they will still mirror what we do, and I don't have answers from them at this point in time for what they're doing. And so as you go down, I'm sure you guys have looked at this through your packet. That's how to read it, and I guess I'm just asking that you guys go above the 2.5%.
You know what page that's on our packet?
Yes, this is on...
27?
27. And 28.
Last year, they were given additional raises, and the police department was...
Correct.
Yeah.
We did do an adjustment on the police department mid-year this year.
I just, I feel we have a signed contract with the, the union, and I don't really want to break the contract. You know, once we sign one, I feel like we need to stick with it. It's just my opinion.
What are your thoughts, Rob?
Probably want them to pay now or pay more later. So, uh, I was in favor last year of going above that because the standard living cost was at 8 or 9%. We went 5 last year, if I remember right. These people, you know, have been a little bit behind, so it's something to consider. Basically, uh, anything, the, last year was the first year we went a little above the union contract, which was the 2.5. The Compensation Board is recommending, I think, 5% this year for the county. I'm not saying we need to mirror that or anything, but I don't know. 2.5 might be a little bit, is a little bit low. So I guess I would be in favor myself of doing at least that 3.5%.
Kristi, your thoughts?
My thoughts is I would go with a 2.5, a straight 3%.
Okay, now, and this isn't a vote, right?
No, no, this is kind of feeling it out. We need to get to the budget ready to go, and I need to kind of know where we are. Now, I mean theoretically, we could vote so that we have like a consensus of where we want to go so that I have an idea of what we want to actually budget the numbers with, right? I will say that I don't know if it needs to be voted on or not.
Thoughts, Derek?
I guess my only question is, is this competitive to what's around us? Any of these? I'm, I'm in favor of the 3.5. I like to split the difference. But my only question is, is this competitive with what's around us?
I, I think we're probably behind the communities right around us, but, you know, we're in a different market than some of the others, like Rock Valley, Sioux Center, Orange City.
Well, I get that, I just...
But I would, I would think that we're probably competitive with some smaller communities, maybe, I don't know what their names are, Akron or, you know, some of the other smaller towns around us. We're probably in the same ballpark, but I haven't seen that number as well either.
It's definitely hard to find a, like, a straight comparative wage because you need to factor in a lot of stuff, like population size, what, how much utilities, how much stuff, because not everybody works, like the electric department, they don't do just electric. They're, they're out here scooping sidewalks. They're out doing other stuff. So, I mean, it's, and unfortunately, I don't have a good comparison built up right now for that, but that's something I could do for next meeting. Try and find a few communities to get, like, average what their salary base is at and how much different we are from them, if that's something you guys are interested in. I could do that for the next meeting, and then we would just put this...
The percentage of increase they're looking at and things like that, yeah, that would be good.
Have you figured anything into the budget at all?
2.5 is where I started at, um, for the budget numbers that are in there right now. So...
Okay, anything else on that? Let's move on to number six, Electric Revenue 2024, Selecting a Payback Method. Jacob?
All right, so with our electric revenue bonds that are getting ready to start for the substation project, projects ready to pick off, so we're going to need money for it this year. With that, we have two options to look at tonight. One is just using the electric revenue bonds. It's based on a 20-year payback schedule. And the total, with everything, I think we're bonding for a little over $7 million. And so that would go through this payback method that I have in your guys' packet. This is the bonds-only one. So one important aspect is to see that we do have current debt already for the last stuff, and it builds off of each other. So as one pays off, it stacks more on how much you pay annually for that. Carol has gone through and got us approved for an EILRP-plus bonds, and it is a $2.5 million bond at a 2% interest rate, so much lower interest rate, which is what makes it so, um, great for the city. However, it is on a 10-year payback schedule, so therefore, the annual payments are quite a bit higher during that. Now, the two major differences to note between those is the total cost of just doing the bonds is going to cost us $9.7 million. If we do both those methods together, it costs us $7.6 million, almost a $2 million savings to the city. But DA Davidson has been going through and doing some of this preliminary workforce, and the amount of the increases that we would need to cover the additional revenue is a little bit higher for the cheaper method for the city. So I will let Travis kind of discuss those because he can talk about it better than I can.
So the bond-only method would need a $236,000 increase for 20 years. You'll see that at the bottom of this sheet. And then the bond-plus loans, for the first 10 years, it's a $425,000 increase. So it's quite substantial for the first 10 years, but then it drops, it drops $600,000 the last 10 years, and it's roughly $420,000 for the last 10 years. So we are doing a rate study with MRAS, so they're going to look at all the rates, the structures. They're going to come up with a, a better plan, which to raise to make it even for all the different, the residential, the commercial, the industrial. But just to give us a, an idea how much that'll be, I just ran with straight increases on the kilowatt hour. So you'll see that first column is 0.01, so that would be a 1-cent increase. That would, um, that would get us $262,306. And I could have went down to 0.07 or 8 to get exactly on there. I just used 1 cent for easy math. And you see, that would cover the, um, the bonds-only plan. And then a 1.7 cent increase would net us $445,921, which would cover the, um, bond-plus loan for the first 10 years. And then you can look at those adjustments after the, after the 10 years. If you go over a little bit, you'll see the average KWH for each residential, commercial, industrial, and then the monthly increase. So I took, you know, the average for each of those and then applied the increase. That would be the monthly increase, um, per each, increase per month. Now, with that MRAS rate study, they're going to adjust. They aren't just going to do a straight penny or 1.7 cents across the board like I did. They're going to, um, adjust that to where residents may be a little bit higher to take that load off some of the commercial if it's, if it's not in balance. That's why we're paying them to do the, the rate study. They'll come up with a, um, the best economical method to raise rates. I just did this on straight KWH to, to show what those increases could be. Because this isn't touching the base rate that, that's charged monthly whether you use consumption or, or not, so that'll be...
Above the base rate, you said?
Yeah, this isn't touching the base rate at all. This is strictly the kilowatt hour usage. Yep, but MRAS would, would look at all, all aspects.
They do a good job, yes.
I just wanted to do this so we kind of had a, had an idea what the increases may need to be when, while deciding which method we want to do. You know, you really like that first method because you're going to save money, but, you know, if we're going to raise the rates so high for our customers for 10 years, you know, maybe it's more feasible to do a longer loan like you're doing a car loan. You know, if you spread it out, you can make those payments easier.
I really tried to look it over, dude.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd love to save $2 million for us. What city wouldn't? The other thing is, is we have three other debts, debts we're paying on an electric fund. And, um, if we went with that loan to save $2 million, you know, the customer has to be charged a lot more. So indirectly, they're kind of contributing to that savings indirectly. I don't want to see the electric fund. This would be the fourth debt, so to have it, revenues and expenses so, so the difference so tight. You know, I always like to think of the future in unforeseen things. Like I said, I'd love to save the $2 million, but I personally have been leaning toward the 20-year, the revenue bonds. For those reasons, because we already have the debt. If we didn't have debt in there, other existing debt, it might be something to consider because the electric fund could handle quite a bit more of it. But they can't, so then we have to charge the customer more.
Right, a little more substantially, yeah.
Your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with Patty there. I'd like to do that, but, you know, this is a, I mean, long-term project, too. And it's going to put us in service for many, many, many years now. I didn't expect it. We're going to pay it off right all at once, so...
Kristi?
I'm in agreement with doing the bonds only. We worked at it all weekend, and we need to begin this week. I would be eager to do the bond only, and that's what I'm...
Derek?
Me, too. I like the bonds only, too.
Okay, so that would... So that would spread the payments out over 20 years and make the increases less per year for our customers.
Correct.
Yep.
Any further discussion or would somebody like?
And I think, Jenny, did you want us to do a vote on this one?
Um, I think everyone was in consensus, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, no, just, I would just, I don't think we need a vote on that or a roll call so long as everyone was in consensus.
Okay.
Make the minute note, educate that, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jenny. Okay, then let's move on to 7A, Public Hearing Authorization of Final Disposition of Real Estate at 16th Street and L. I will open the public hearing at 6 o'clock. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:01.
We didn't receive anything.
No, nothing from the city.
Okay. So we've got before us the resolution, 2024-01, Authorizing Final Disposition of Real Estate, 16th Street and L. Anything to add?
I'll pass it to Carol.
I really don't have much to add. We are selling the land for $32,100, which is double the rate of what we sell commercial land for. So I think we're getting a great price for that lot. It will be a wonderful addition to our community to have the six townhomes built on it. I think it'll look great. It just is a win-win as far as I'm concerned.
Anyone else?
We've talked about it earlier and it is a good project. We definitely need housing.
It will be a very nice addition. Okay, for already, I would take a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-01.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call on this. Alan?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Harvey? Not here. Lucky?
Aye.
And Warner? Passes four to zero. Thank you. Moving on, number eight, Resolution 2024-02, Approving the Application for the USDA Rural Business Grant Program. Who would like to speak on that? Carol, again?
This is simply a resolution to let the USDA know that you guys are aware that I'm applying for the $140,000 and it kind of brings it to the forefront so that $140,000 just doesn't come in and Carol whisks it away. It's more of just a way of letting the USDA know that we're all informed.
Okay, any questions on that? If not, I would take a motion.
I'll make that motion to, to Resolution 2024-02.
Okay, thank you, Rob, and a second?
I'll second that.
Patty seconds. We'll have a roll call on this. This time, we'll start with Anderson.
Aye.
Lucky?
Aye.
Warner?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Passes four to zero, thank you. Number nine, Potential Rate Increases for Cable.
All right, let me get to my next page down here. Okay. So I gave council members and staff one of these sheets to kind of shows us, this is also in the council packet. If you guys are watching online, you can go to our website and all of this will be inside that council packet. It looks like it's the last page. So I just went through and tried to find the, the actual cost to the city per subscriber for these for the next three years of this contract. This is just with the next star contract. I mean, so went through there, as you can read that, starting this year, the increase per customer for basic was $3.44 and for expanded is $4.22 per customer. And you can see those gradual increases as we go. Each year is an additional increase from the other. That is the true increase to just the city for the next star contracts. I know that we also have contracts with NCTC that they did negotiate for us, that we will have minor cost increases that we incur through them that we don't vote on. So, but this one that we did, this one we have control over, so.
So that's $3.44 the first year?
Correct.
And then it goes up?
Another $2.32 the next year and then $2.66 the next year. So at the end of this, basic cable cost for us per subscriber for these channels would have gone up $8.30, yeah.
That's just Channel 9 and 11, right?
That is 9 and 11, correct. Nine, nine, one and 11, one.
And you say there, we've got some other channels that will be having probably minor increases, but?
Yeah, that happens like probably annually from NCTC. And they're usually anywhere between 5 to 10% every year for some of those channels.
These increases then would really just cover the increase that we experienced from re-upping with Channel 9, 1 and 11, 1?
Correct, and this is just our cost to us. I'm not suggesting that we increase it by this much for each one. I'm just showing how much our costs have increased per customer, so, for just these channels.
Okay. Questions? What are you looking for here?
I'm kind of saying that we should probably look at increasing our package cost for, by probably at least this amount right here that are on here, that are on these to cover our additional costs to the city because we are already not making money on cable. So every, if we were to eat these costs, then we are.
Well, we should pass that on.
Going, yes. That's, I'm saying that we should take these cost increases and pass them on.
Are you talking $3.44 this year and then pass the next on next year? Are you talking?
And I'm assuming that we could build one ordinance change that would reflect all of these changes if that's what we wanted to do.
Do them per year.
Like it would be a stacked change, I'm assuming. Because we've done that in electric before where we say this year, it's going to be this much, this year, it's going to be this much, and this year, it's going to be this much.
I'll make that motion to pass the.
Do we make a?
And I don't necessarily know if that's something, if, if you guys are all in consensus that we just need to pass these actual costs on, then I will get with Jenny and we will start putting together the ordinance for this. I just wanted to gauge your guys' interests in the process of that.
I agree with that.
Derek? Well, you've got your consensus.
And then also do inform the public that we are looking at it, so.
Yes.
Very good. Word two, number 10, Consent Agenda, the Hayward and Golf Clubhouse, Asking for Liquor License Transfer to the Hayward Community Center on January 13, 2024. Need a motion on that?
Yes, just for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, and a second? Kristi, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, passes four to zero. Thank you. We are at number 11, Adjournment. We have a motion?
Motion, Derek.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes four to zero. Thank you very much. Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.